Okay, it is twelve minutes till we call the meeting to order. I hope everyone had a chance to look through the packet and has read the Do I have a motion approved in minutes? Are there any corrections for the minutes for November? Is there a second?
I will I put twenty twenty one instead of twenty twenty two.
Oh.
I won't make the change, I'm sorry.
You will correct that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the red standard for is red, thank you. Would like to introduce how to guests, we have guests today, if you introduce yourself, Robert.
Robert McLeodon.
Robert, if you remember how when they actually did the survey, so we know. So he was he is here to help us today.
Brennan LaCarre, Canadianer for the Daily Times.
We have a new Daily Times person. You all have two minutes, if you would like to use your two minutes. No, okay.
Yeah, no, no. I want to be to update on this.
May I give us two minutes?
I'll update you on the Arconic grant that Kiwanis Club got from Arconic for the two solar powered charging stations and wifi extenders that we installed at the Martin Luther King Community Center. I told I talked to Lily Brown, who's the director of the center a couple of weeks ago and asked her, how are the kids using it or any others? And she said the children who come to the community center are enjoying it, they go over there and they use it. And they do so appropriately and they really appreciate those stations there, so that's really great to hear. And I don't know if Logan wants to share anything that he's observed while he's over there. The other thing I want to talk about is that our club still has about three thousand dollars from that Arconic grant. And we're talking to Lily Brown and Parks and Rec to see are there other things that we can do with that three thousand dollars to on those charging stations, whether it's cameras or ramps, concrete ramps or something else that would be a further benefit. So we're we're still talking about that and we'll have to figure out how we can use the rest of the Arconic.
And it would in conversations with Robert, he also did say that once the board and the new director Manny gets a little bit comfortable when we decide to take the community survey information and dive deeper and create that community survey committee, Robert said he would be interested in seeing how he could be of help and thank you for that.
Manny was gonna check in with us today, but he also was gonna move his wife. And of course, I think you've been reading the news, he got hit with a snowstorm, so I don't think he's out about anywhere. I think he last last time he's he wrote me, he said he was really looking forward to moving down here. Six feet or six inches of snow and it was ten degrees.
He's the one that bringing the snow down then.
He's the one who brought it in the first place this weekend. It's his fault.
My kids enjoyed it, so completely.
That was beautiful. Okay. Just quickly moving on to my 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 report. The only thing that I have done in the last month, and incidentally, I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season and didn't get COVID like a lot of people did during this season. Hope we just keep staying healthy for the future. But I did meet with the city of Maryville and went over the construction projects and what we're doing with them also, so they know what's going on. Blount County had some other problems, this so they didn't get a chance to get back to me. And so I didn't meet with them, but they're on my schedule for this week and next week, and so is our color. And then once we do that, I will be taking Manny around to to just meet everyone.
Can you share after those meetings kind of their feedback on the construction reports, the construction progress?
Was there any or or do I give them?
Or you can wait, I guess, until all three maybe?
Um, there wasn't anything from them, o- other than they were hap- Maryville was happy to see us moving forward with this. They were hundred percent for it. And of course, the library is a is a shining star. And it's it's really good for
Yeah, yeah.
For you too, so.
I'm glad to hear their.
Yeah, so they were really for it and we'll we'll see how the other ones go. Okay. Janine, you ready for your report?
All right, so what is it, a few things I wanted to just add to in this report. Under the youth services update, it talks about the expansion to children's programming and STEAM programming. And I wanted to just, I brought in the recent events calendar. This is a, well, the way we're currently using it is a quarterly tab in the daily times so that it's got coverage of over eleven thousand subscribers in the Blount County area. And then we get, so it prints off in series of a thousand, so we get about eight hundred of these. And then we put them out for public consumption in-house. What is it, pre-COVID, we were doing this every other month and we would also take it to community centers. We will ramp that back up as the new norm, whatever that looks like, starts to really level out. What is it, I do want to say that this is truly the example of several people coming together and making it happen. Every department touches this, every like most departments proofread it. The PR team, you know, does the color, the layout, things like that. However, it is all the content comes from all the departments, some from our support agencies like the Friends. We're wanting to, in this next year, create a section that is for the foundation so that they also have a opportunity to reach out to the community with a message. So, big thank you to the Friends because all out this, we have about a twelve thousand dollar budget for this each.
Thank you for the newspaper too.
Yes.
Also in that is our calendar and what's going on. And so I want to make sure that you all take a look at it and see what's happening, because you see where the staff here is really doing a terrific job.
And now this is just something that I I can't not say. The coloring on this is slightly off and that's due to the printer and that is being discussed. This is what RGB looks like when it's printed in a CMYK format, and I don't know if any of that matters to you. But it matters to me because these tomatoes were beautiful. And that's what they are, the tomatoes, so. So I just wanted to leave that here. Okay, um, let's see, I wanted to also bring up, uh, the gift committee met. Did I skip too far ahead, I think I did. Yes. Yes, okay, so we talked about that. Collection, all right. Let's see. Wanted to bring to everyone's attention just that there were some decisions that we were going to discuss and revisit in this meeting. They were the reinstatement of reserve fees overdue fines and the returning to sixty-nine and a half hours of operation. Due to the high number of Omicron cases we have locally, as well as a new director coming on board, I would like to make the suggestion that we push this back to March. It will happen and I'm not just kicking the can down the road. It's just that I I feel like there's more information and insight that Manny can bring to it as well as the admin planning team are discussing things like how the reserves are done, how who's affected by when reserves aren't, and we need a little more time to to flush all that out, to share that with you and to see how we're going to present it to you all.
Rather than ask for a motion, I hope you all just don't mind if we just push this back about two months.
And and you're planning on implementing the RSIB and all that in March anyway, and you're resisting to be closed?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to push it. You know, after all that's been.
Exactly, it might be a wonderful way to roll it all out.
There's no concern from regional library system at all about I know that they they want us, that some, I think COVID still allows us to be at reduced hours, right?
It does.
Yes, okay.
So Liz, you think that's okay for now? Until it's.
I haven't received any other updated guidance as long as it's the same guidance as long as it's due to COVID closures. And I mean, I understand, you know, bringing a new director in, of course, you're gonna wanna ask him what he needs to do, that's, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. His start date, I was trying to find that in the minutes, I missed the last meeting, Manny's start date.
Oh, his start date is the twenty-fourth of January, okay.
Next Monday.
Next month, unless he's snowed.
So that gives him enough, that gives you guys enough time to meet, talk, present.
As well as for him enough time to really help in-depth conversations with staff?
We we made the starting date not a firm starting date too, if you can't get here, then that's fine, if you go wherever, sometime makes.
So do we need a motion on that or?
No. Just making sure that all board members are here. And have that recorded in the minutes. The next thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is, and this is a request for a motion, is that the gift committee recommends and requests a motion that the gift from the estate of Karen Petrie be accepted by the Blount County Public Library Board of Trustees and given to the foundation for the Blount County Public Library for future projects.
Through your motion, I'm just saying, second. All in favor? Incidentally, thank you to the gift committee too, it's really nice to see them actually working and and creating something, it really is a help.
Um, let's see, uh, were there any questions from the gift committee minutes that were provided? Let's see. The foundation project timeline was also provided. And what is it, I spoke with Chris Soros today regarding the book return project. Outside of what I shared in my report, our conversation today is to reiterate that he now understands that we need the pricing for this project so that Manny and I can get together along with staff input and come up with priority and what we believe the timeline for each project should be or could be and where we would like them, the funds to come from. What is it? Not on not on that part yet, uh, what is it, so also, that's what I wanted to say. With the pricing for the freight elevator in our conversation, in my conversation with Chris Soros today, the six hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar price tag that does not include a cantilever canopy that would go over the, um, so just remember there's an awning that's not included.
And above it's a book return.
And that through conversations with Andy and I and in further, you know, sharing that vision with Chris Soros, we are wanting to concrete from the, um, the exit door next to the book drop all the way to about three feet past the freight elevator going towards the greenway so that there is a space for the Friends book return, or sorry, donation bins to stay under canopy, but they can get the bins in and out while still on a concrete platform and get them into the freight elevator. As well as when people are entering into the book return, it allows them to drop off what they need to with the library. Then if they're making donations and it's just onesie twosies, they can pull in but be out of the line of traffic so others can go by them. They can read, if it's one or two, they can just drop their items off there, but if they've got boxes, they can then just back it up straight into the freight elevator entryway. So that is not, that extended concrete pad is not part of that six one six seven fifty number.
So the freight elevator, six hundred and sixteen thousand?
Well, there's a lot of construction with that.
A whole bunch, a whole bunch.
Yeah, I guess I've just been curious why that's so much higher than the, it gave us like two hundred thousand.
It's my fault.
Okay.
And
I was just like, wow.
It's been a lot of years since I did that.
That was such a rough.
But
That was your roughest.
That was my, well, that was my rough, but since that time, we've we've made a lot of changes. We've enclosed the room that it was going to be open, where were you looking at the window where it was open, it was gonna stay open. Now we've decided to fill it in with with stone, so it's completely filled in. It'll have it'll have a metal roof over the top of it, and then that will be filled in too. And then we'll get some storage out of that, we'll we'll get some additional room. There's just a lot more, the overhangs, one of the things we're talking to the guys that they go out in the rain to pull their books and things, and there's no reason to do that. And we were.
I was just wondering the price jump.
Yeah, I was, it just kept growing up.
Yeah.
But a lot of it was just because I thought, well, we gotta do it right.
The other thing is we thought we would be able to put things inside the existing shaft and not have to do a lot of construction within that, we will have to go down.
Yeah, we were told.
Yeah, okay, so.
Out of curiosity, the, um, was the the extension and the overhead canopy, um, why is that not part of the of the project, if I'm asking, is where, you know?
Oh, be- because, uh, what is it, um, so each of these are like, they bring us something, we have a conversation, we come back to them. What is it, we had met with Greg, um, and at that meeting, um,
Throw some extra.
Dick was there. Yeah, sorry, yeah, Dick was there and was like, you know, we would really like an overhead, and then that was introduced to it. And it's Chris who is project managing all of this. So we're kind of getting this out of order, but I want to show you the pricing as we're getting it. And so when this was sent, we had talked about the canopy, but um, in a later email, Greg said, oh, I'm sorry, I did not include the canopy pricing in this. So it is part of the project, it should have been included, we will get you an updated, but I wanted to get you
Where is this going to run?
where we're at and the direction we're heading. Pardon? I would have no idea, but it's coming and I will share it.
Your best guess?
It's not, I'm.
Yeah, yes, I I can't judge that, but I don't know.
It would be.
I don't know if we want this, this.
Prices are just climbing under quote.
I don't try to.
Yeah, I think that's something under quote, so like, we do need to, you know, like this, take it with a grain of salt, I I guess as well, because from the quote of the library.
What what you need to know is this is the start and the number's going up. And that's all I really can tell you at this stage, I wanted to give you the pricing that we had at this stage. And the other thing we're asking Chris is to show us where possible to give us sections so that we can see, okay, this is the first element we need to do, this is the second, exactly. So, um, what is it, the canopy is a nicety and I want to say the Friends will say it's essential. I totally get that, especially when it's cold and it's raining and you're out there dealing with books. However, you know, if the job is is a red light or a green light, depending on the price of the canopy, then I'm sure the Friends would prefer it to be a green light and will work towards the canopy, does that make sense?
Do we have to have more than one bed?
And just.
Well, we don't have any beds.
So we, so here's the, we're just working on the concept side. Exactly, right now what we're doing.
Do we have to get more than one?
It depends on how, it depends, it depends on how we do it. If we, yeah, if we decide, like, so for instance, Chris Soros has been our project manager through many of our projects. And so, uh, what is it? If the board wanted to, we could definitely do that with foundation, as long as they felt due diligence and the board felt that due diligence had taken place. But at this stage, what we're doing is we're identifying the projects, we're getting pricing for the projects, and then we're gonna get you a timeline, and then the projects are probably gonna have to be quoted because it'll be a different world.
In this economy, there is no way that we're not gonna get kids. It just isn't gonna happen. You know, the cost of the elevator, the elevator really has gone up. It's just everything else that we're doing is keeps going up. And right now, concrete is just unbelievable.
Something that that size, I'll be happy to get parts, start something and then it's sitting there for a year.
That should.
Kind of scared.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't start anything until their funding was in and the supply, like.
Probably won't get this stuff for a long time, that's how all of our staff's been, uh, working on industrial projects since twelve, sixteen month, they time something, I don't know about elevators.
This project?
I don't know about this particular.
This project shouldn't be anywhere near that kind of thing.
I mean, the the, I did share with you many almost lifetimes ago, the the county's experience with their elevator install
That was horrible.
and the timeline and the expense, so one, we want to learn from that. But again, this is the project, this is, um, what is it, letting you know where we're at with figuring out what is needed and what kind of pricing we're looking at. So you'll see something later down the track from Manny and it'll be probably, uh, a lot more fine tuned, you know, saying, okay. Okay, um, then, let's see. Okay, then there is under the book drop automation, um, project. There is a request that a motion be made to close the week of the twenty-first of March to the public in terms of physical, physically accessing the campus buildings for seven days to tag and encode the physical circulating collection. During that time, it means they're not gonna be allowed in the building, they'll still have access to wifi on the external. So in the on the parking lot, they will, curb side will still be available to them. Why, let's see. We will hopefully by that time have four to five circulating laptops out for for some. The schools have a one-to-one in our county, we're very blessed with that, so, um, it will be an altered form of library service, not a complete, you know, no library service offered at all.
So it's more than worth it.
No, yeah, it is, it is not on any of the spring breaks, um, and let's see. I've touched. Um, what is it, uh? Yeah, we will be, the the final bullet point in there was that the public relations for this, what we'll do is on Wednesday, we will reach out to our stakeholders and we'll let them know that we'll be having a closure for this project. Then we will put it in our calendar, we will create a slider in the announcements on our website. But closer, like in the month of March, that's when you're gonna see it on our social media and on our indoor signs and outdoor signs. We're also going to be reaching out, see if we can use, um, radio PSAs, uh, public service announcements the week of, maybe that Monday and that Thursday, to make sure we're really, sorry, not the week of, the week before. So we're gonna make sure we are saturating as much as possible to let the community know that during this week, we're tagging and encoding.
Should we send an email to all our survey respondents?
So that was the other thing, the, um, in the PR section, I mentioned for the first time a patron point. And that's where we would use patron point, what patron point is, it works from all cardholders and we would send it out to every single one of them, um, so that there would at least be notice in, you know, they read it, so. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I'm gonna ask for a motion on this at the next meeting. That's okay. We're closing.
I would think they would do a certain plan.
I would like it now.
Yeah.
Oh, I wanted to get a chance to talk to them. This is funny, but it's okay.
Well, if you want to mention it to them, I'm I'm fine with that, I would just like us to.
Okay, I'll mention. Okay.
Manny managed to join us, he's up here. Hi Manny.
Well, in the meantime.
Hi, how are you? I've been up since four, so.
See you there. Oh, he's there.
I I am, I'm in a hotel in Virginia with two, two crazy dogs right now. So they're actually calm for the moment, but that's why I've been off video, because they've been, they've never been in a hotel before, so they're very anxious.
What part of, what part of Virginia?
I am in Christianburg, Christianburg.
Okay, so you're less than four hours away.
Yeah, I left around four, about four thirty this morning from Massachusetts and hit some really bad traffic in Connecticut leading into New York, which wasn't a shocker. And then I arrived here about quarter of five, I would say.
The worst is done.
Yes, yeah.
But the sun's shining, so you'll be happy.
I'm looking forward to it, it was extremely cold when I left Massachusetts, so, and I'm not bringing it with me, I promise, Andy.
You better not. Okay, talking about the 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 closing, then can I have a motion on on closing? And i- if you read that section, there was also in, I'm sure they told me not to bring this up, but there's there's a section about volunteers there. That we would love to see volunteers at training on all of this review. So that's all part of, it's all part of it.
So do you have the date yet or you're still?
No, no, that's what, we want to close the week of March twenty twenty-first, that is a Yeah, so, uh, what is it, if you start your week on a Sunday, then it would be March twentieth, but we are closed that seven day period. And, uh, what is it, there will be a need for volunteers, but I want to talk with the admin planning team to make sure we're, putting you.
She's not gonna let me put anything in books, she said she'll let me run, that's it.
You just want to make sure everybody's good time. So, uh, yes, there there may be a list asking for volunteers soon, and I would definitely say, especially with curbside, you guys could definitely help out with that, so. So we will be closing for that seven day period.
So can I have a motion for that? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a, are we finished your report or I have a question?
Uh, let's see. The only other, uh, I just wanted to talk about the, uh, very quickly, the other, um, quotes that are in here, um, they are for the capstone or the precast work around the, um, so this precast work is thirty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So this precast work is thirty five thousand seven hundred and thirty nine dollars, that is for the large capstone and the I'm forgetting the word, what's the, it's the filler that you put in between the stones, grout.
The ground, the ground.
Grout, thank you. Um, what is it, and for the grouting of the capstones around the top of the children's amphitheater wall? And then that particular garden bed.
The thirty five thousand?
Is the thirty five thousand, now, I want to put on the board's radar that the capstones all across this campus, around this entire building are now moving. They're like, and I'm talking moving big time, like they, not that they could fall over, it would have, I tried to move one back into position.
You're failing.
Yeah, and so just, I wanted, this'll be something that we'll have discussions with Manny about, and then we'll be coming to you with where we think this should come from, if this is deferred maintenance, or so. Again, this is just letting you know that this is something that is happening to our facility and our campus, and I wanna put it on your radar. Um, what is it then?
I will be, I'm talking to the county and the city about being part of the green bill.
Being part of the green bill? Like then maintaining it?
Yeah, exactly, I didn't know we're on, yeah, I will be talking to them.
So, um, what is it, uh, I also wanted to, the second quote, which is about thirty three thousand dollars, uh, that is for uh, the renovation for one of the admin hallway bathrooms and for the friends upstairs um bathroom. Uh, this is just something to be aware of, and again, when Manny's here and on board, we'll prioritize what that, where that falls in with all the other projects. Um, I want to uh, share with you guys that right now um, in the learning lab, we have had a plumbing issue that started on Friday of last week, and um, what is it, uh? We called our plumber out, um, they did what they could on Friday, it wasn't enough to uh rectify the problem. Uh, in essence, there's a blockage in our sewage line, it is feeding back and coming through the floor drain. Um, what is it, they were supposed to come back out today, they came back out today. Um, not being well versed in, with our system and not uh waiting for our maintenance technician. They sit their ram down and it went into the other toilet and blew it up. So uh, yeah, so right now, we've got a broken toilet. We've also, they also managed to then send the auger one hundred feet into the line and broke it. So.
The line? Or the auger?
They broke the auger.
Both.
Oh.
Oh, they broke the line?
The line's broke, well, it's hard.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, so um, what is it, there's reasons why I'm bringing this up, the main one is the county clerk's office is now affected. Okay, they don't have a bathroom, they will have to come up here and that could prove an issue, because I don't know how many people they have staffed here and what kind of, but for those of you who have contacts with them, uh, you know, I'll send out an email letting them know that we're actively trying to fix this and that. Um, but I wanted to put it on your radar, because you might get that's okay. Okay, um. One of the things.
It's gonna take a while to be repaired.
Yeah, one of the.
Like a while, what's that, a week?
We'll know, he was supposed to call me back, the owner of the plumbing business was supposed to call me back today, but I have.
The sewer is plugged, the sewer is plugged.
Can you get porter potties on there?
What?
When you get porter potties on there, like one or two? I don't know the use, uh, how much the learning lab's getting used right now, but it's kind.
I think it's the smell that might be another issue.
It's a, it. It, it all backed up inside, the inside of it.
Yeah.
But it'll be helpful if I can reach out to the county clerk and say, hey, would you like this?
Well, one of the things, what we will do is call CERPRO and whatever and see if the county will clean, clean it up for us, for them.
Yeah.
One of the things that they said is uh, that is recommended is a um external sewer cleanout. And uh, what is it, I have asked them to provide a quote for that. So that is again, one of the projects.
What's the company? Did we talk to Denny Warren?
It's a, it's a, the Blount County plumber, it's, it's the one we have contract, so um, I don't know the name of it.
Just, just bring it to us, it was choice one.
Yes, yeah, it is, yeah.
Which should be choice zero.
It is the choice.
Yeah.
Seems like it, other things were done there, but like they were done here. Half ass. And they never should have put a sewer system and toilets in without a cleanout. You all, you, you know, you all have good house. And you do what, trust me, so to put, to put one in a commercial building with nothing is ridiculous.
And then the, the final thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is um last week, uh, it was brought to Lauren's attention and she shared it with me, thank you very much, regarding some of the more um frost like winter wonderland temperatures that certain sections of the library can experience. Um, I wanted to share with you that Dakin is out and they are looking at those issues to see, there are three areas, children's reference, I'm blanking on the third one. Um, but we are working, we're actively working on addressing that, uh, and then finally, the um emergency stop boiler, yeah, the emergency boiler stops have been installed. Um, and uh, they should be finalized and they're, they, they're gonna come back tomorrow and do a little more tweaking. Right now, if you push it, you have to go then reset the entire thing, can't just pull it back out and it'll start. So tomorrow, they're gonna come out and they're gonna get it to where you can pull it back out and restart it. Okay, I think that's all the construction and programming stuff.
The nice thing is we have paid this people, and it's paid by six months. So it don't matter for us.
Okay, that is everything.
The concrete things that are coming off, who completed that construction and have we reached out to them? I mean, some of those things have lifetime warranties on them.
So what we'd probably need to do is like, so I just got this pricing about this capstone, I haven't even talked to the county about it and maybe this is something that they could um
Yeah.
go and, and talk to them, um.
Can you talk to Chris about it, especially if it's the issue up here, too? Chris.
Sorry.
Chris Sor, um.
Cuz they've got some products now that are not concrete, they're shot lighter weight, if you may replace.
I have to, so uh, what is it, um, Chris may be a know, be aware that we've asked for the quote from Joseph Construction. Um, however, we just got this, and so I haven't made any, but what I will do is I will talk with Chris Soros about them and see what his recommendations are. And I will talk to Randy and Brian and see uh, what their recommendations are.
If there's someone coming back out, piece of their loose, have that builder come back out, secure the back place, I don't know.
Although, that was like, well, it's been twenty years ago in the building.
They're twenty, twenty.
There are twenty years ago, yeah.
I don't care. For it.
Yeah.
They might, it's, you know.
It just depends, I don't know.
I think it's worth, it's, it's worth calling.
That is my report.
Okay. I hope you all saw the pictures of Santa. He, he did a great job and unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of people here. I'm sorry.
No, I just have a question on our report, uh, maybe you can keep going about Santa. Um, under patron services, update, can you share with me why staff is cross-training to a circulation in the bookmark cafe? Why the bookmark cafe?
Um, why they're the only department that trains in there, or why any department trains in there?
Yeah, help me, yeah.
Okay, so what is it, when, in two thousand seventeen, when I started, the bookmark cafe had its own dedicated staff. There was a um shift in funding, and so what we learned is that we couldn't have dedicated staff for that. So from that point on, not two thousand, someday about what year did we start? Was it two thousand eighteen, maybe, we've been cross-training in there actively since twenty, since twenty, okay. So in twenty twenty, we started, um, anyone who was a new hire in patron services would automatically be trained in the cafe as well. And um, I have to say, now that we've got Chelsea Mathania um overseeing the cafe and um, really acting as the manager with that as her main focus and with the uh consistency that she has been able to bring into the procedures that take place in there, um, with our patron service team, they come in, they get taught, they know exactly what's expected of them. And um, they do a very good job, like our cafe is doing very well in this economy.
So it's for workforce, it's like you guys need the hell addition, that's all I, oh, sorry, yeah.
I was just gonna say, if you see him eventually, make sure you thank him for, for being Santa this year, and he does it, he really does a great job.
That little magical elf, by the way, is uh, AB from Bureau of Designers, so.
Okay, any question, any more questions, event, or? Okay, um. Joe, I do have a report that's been from.
We do not have any reports, as in December, the foundation board got together for a letter folding and naming, hopefully you all received our annual update on it. Part of that process, but we did not meet, we also did not meet last week uh, in January, so our next meeting to report on it will be in February.
But you did any response?
Yes.
Okay, Bruce, can you?
Oh, hold on, um, what is it, uh, can we, if it's possible, um are you able, or is the foundation able to look back to when the amphitheater um fundraising program started or campaign started? And see if you can uh isolate who the contributors were for that one, because um, we have some, an update on what the future of the amphitheater might hold, and we wanna weigh our options, but we also wanna identify who those contributors were, so we make sure that if if we can't and choose not to repair the amphitheater, we can use that recognition.
Do you have part of the original fundraising campaign, a lot of them?
I do not know.
I don't think they were separate, if they were separated that much. And I, they would all be in paper, so records weren't electronic and all the time.
That's right.
So I'm thinking we're probably, if the amphitheater was built as part of the original library, we're gonna be going back to donations made in nineteen nineteen, like eighteen ninety nine, two thousand.
Um, what is it, uh, would you be able to just see if, one, you have those kind of records, and then maybe um, we can see if there's staff personnel that can assist in trying to figure out if that information even exists.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Okay, I'm handing out a little package earlier, as far as it's, sorry, it didn't get put in the original package. But it's uh fairly brief, I'll try to be brief on this, a lot of it, in fact, you've already seen. Um, I have my first item, a little bit of bragging. Two people I wanna mention, we've nominated Diane Laco, who's the leader of our electronic sales as the VC FOL friend of the year. And that has not been approved in the state, but we have nominated her, cuz she's done an outstanding job in focusing that team. The other bit of bragging is that we had two people out in the uh basement, we could go Monday, one of them was in a little, little distress. So she told the other person she was going upstairs. It ended up, uh, ambulance had to be called, they took her to the hospital, but the person who was with her went up, checked on her, um, made sure that arrangements had been made, made to send her to the hospital and finally drove to hospital to make sure she was okay. So that person, Donna Dubois, uh, I personally recognized and thanked, but I wanted to mention it to you, and this is the best part of being a Good Samaritan. Um, financial performance, eBay continues to roll along right now in a level of close to ten thousand dollars a month. Um, in fact, they are starting to change our paradigm on, you know, who the leader of the pack is in Friends of Library. Uh, uh, and, and the other thing to mention is our December book sale brought in about nine to ten thousand dollars, which is a little disappointing. Uh, we were expect, hoping, expecting a little bit more. Um, and uh, right now, our, you can see that our focus may well be evolving into uh concentrating on online sales. We will still have uh site sales, just because I think the community needs them and wants them, but they may eventually get scaled out. Um, in the part of the package I gave to you, there are some visuals of the layout of the uh, the new, the new floor. And then, I don't plan to have you review this or go over it in great amount of detail, we've gone over it briefly with Anjanay and myself, of course. But it gives you a visual of what the, the, the new eBay is going to look like in the uh west end of the building. Um, and behind that, there are a couple of proposals, one for lights and the other for electrical drops. Both of those proposals are for about, um, I think it's nine thousand dollars. And uh I guess the, the last point is on the last page. And the suggestion that as a board, we make sure that you are aware and approve the uh concept of moving our online sales to the other end of the basement. And, and that includes uh changes to the lighting, changes to the electrical supply as we, as we mentioned. Uh, we will fund that, I mean, uh, I've always told Anjanay, our money is your money, but um, you know, we've we've got proposals to do that work, Dick has been intimately involved with all of it. And in fact, we have a uh, a husband of a volunteer who's an architect. And he's got detailed architectural plans and Dick boiled it down into a nice three D picture. Uh, but it would be like a Chinese newspaper to go over that, uh, to any uh level of detail, anybody who wants to see it, of course, can see it. So we've got, we, Dick and the architect and Anjanay have put a lot of work into this so far. Uh, I guess what I'm asking is that a motion, I realize I'm not officially on the board, but a motion be put forward to let us move forward in the big new open space kind of space.
I mean, cause.
Can I have a motion for that?
I actually have a question to ask.
Sure.
How does this fit in with eventual plans for using the council's public space? You know?
The main reason for moving our online sales eBay is to make room for the eventual installation of the rest. That has to come out of the way, because the rest are all gonna go into the, the east end of the basement. Uh the, the freight elevator can go on without, uh, without us moving even. Uh, so.
But the, so there are any electrical or lighting changes that would need to be changed again, or that would interfere with the work, maybe the water, this one, yeah.
No, no, no.
And the two quotes that they have for the extra electric and the extra lighting are included and they're nominal, they're less than nine thousand dollars total for both sets of rooms, so.
Yeah. Yes. And they're the outfit that we. And they're the outfit that we use in fact to do the LED conversion upstairs.
Anything that they install will not be torn back out. Right, right. Okay, it was second, I have in, in the motion, I have a second, can I have a vote? Let the Friends of Library move, install some key lighting and move their things around. Anyone in favor?
I'm fine.
If you oppose? Most curious, thank you.
That's it.
And and once again, I say this every meeting, they're incredible, what they do and if you go down to the book sales, it it's just how much they, they move out of there, it's just, just totally, totally amazing. Okay. Liz, thanks for, for waiting and bearing with us.
You're fine.
Hope you're having a.
I got an extra large cup of coffee. Thank you for having me this way, so sorry, gotta love inclement weather, I'm sure Manny coming from Massachusetts thinks our inclement weather is kind of uh maybe a little funny, but it's inclement weather here, Manny, you'll, you'll get used to it. Um, so I sent a report and also the standards survey analysis report that we distribute to our library directors and our boards each year. Um, mainly just hitting some highlights, you all can look, um, our, we have lots of really relevant upcoming training um in-service sessions for our member libraries and trustees are always welcome to attend too, so if any of these pique your interest, just let us know. Um, we'll talk about um, our next, next week's session is burnout, stress, anxiety, we're calling it the the pandemic hangover at the public library and that will be with uh Laurie Thompson, who is our continuing education coordinator for T S L A. She'll be presenting on that, she's an excellent. Um, and we also then in February will host the uh library marketing in-service as well as we are, we've thrown in there an extra new director roundtable, um, we have, we kinda ha- have had um a, an odd situation, odd but new, we have six or seven relatively new library directors in our region um, over the last eighteen months, and so we thought it would be good to get everybody together and uh give them all an opportunity to kind of uh meet each other and kind of network a little bit and talk about some things um region-wise. So we've added that um new director roundtable and we'll be very happy to have you with us, Manny. Then in March, uh, at the beginning of March, we will have uh Amy French, who's with the Alzheimer's Association of Tennessee. And she will be coming to talk to our libraries about various um programming uh opportunities for public libraries utilizing the Alzheimer's Association chapters uh across the state. So we're, we're excited to have her come and talk to our libraries. Um, you know, basically, um, our libraries are working on the ARPA slash tech grants right now. We've distributed contracts, we are asking that libraries begin making purchases as soon as they can. Um, like everybody else, I'm sure will be experiencing and and dropping back and punting with some of the global shortages in equipment and other things that are happening. Um, but we have change forums and we're here to help make any kind of recommendations we can for anything um to help you all expend those funds. Um, we also uh have um allowed our libraries to begin focusing a little more, I know Blount County does this and has for years about really uh looking at their digital collection. A lot of our libraries focus on um and have focused primarily on the physical collection in their uh materials and their collections, but we have partnered with Overdrive, who is our vendor for Tennessee Reads. And um now our member libraries can actually use um Overdrive to purchase um digital materials with some of their state allocation funds that they receive through our office, in addition to if they applied for it, some of the ARPA grant funds as well, so uh we're pretty excited about that opportunity, we've been working with them for a while and they've finally figured out the invoicing part of it, so, or fingers crossed, we hope they have. So, um, then of course you see the Reads report as well, the circulation report for December. Um, we were up just slightly as a region, uh, which is not anything surprising for the month of December, most people are off and have a little more extra time to read, so um, keep plugging away with Tennessee Reads promotion. Um, the Overdrive app, um, right now patrons can access uh Tennessee Reads Consortium through the Overdrive app or the Libby app, both are Overdrive products. The Overdrive app was the original app that was utilized for folks, uh, and they are, that app is going away. Not support for it, but you can't download it anymore at the end of February. Um, and and our libraries know that eventually that app will be replaced by the Libby app, and so hopefully, we've, we've been communicating to our libraries to please if they have new folks that come in the library, really point them in the direction of using Libby as that app as opposed to the Overdrive app, because eventually it will be phased out. Um, otherwise, uh, you have the standards analysis report. Um, the standard survey is an annual survey that our library directors complete in July of every year. And um, we put together an entire analysis so that you can see the responses from the past two fiscal years. And the board and directors can look at that and use the state standards for public libraries um in long-range planning and any kind of budget request or anything that, that you might need to put forth if, if you are trying to meet a standard that requires extra funding. Um, it's an in-house evaluation tool, it's not a grade card, it doesn't go anywhere. Um, if it did, you all should be super proud, cause you would be top of the class. Um, you're doing very well uh meeting a lot of, on the majority of the standards. And of course, these are for level five libraries, which you all are, we wouldn't expect a level one to meet the same standard as you all do, so, kudos.
Thank you, one question, Liz. Under the February eleventh, the T S L A's lunch and speaker.
Yeah.
Is that something that the library can actually latch on to and make it part of our programming also?
But they could certainly advertise it, that is not actually a regional in-service, but I wanted to include that because it's a program that the State Library and Archives is um providing as part of their series to commemorate two hundred twenty-five years of Tennessee history. So they can view that either in person, of course, you know, at the National Public Library, if they wanna go, that they can.
No, I mean, can we, can we zoom in local then?
Sure.
Like in this room, put it and and ask people to come in?
I think that would be fine, sure, it's open to the public, so if anybody wants to attend that, that would be great.
It sounds like a great program, does it happen every month?
They have, yes, they have had um all different, uh, as part of that lecture series, they've had all kinds of different programs going. Um, I can't remember if it's monthly. But we can, I can, you can look that up for sure on the links. Um, it's, it's streamed, of course, on the Facebook page for the Tennessee State Library and Archives and also Secretary of State.
I know the, I know the, the Knoxville Museum does like a lecture series, and they call it lunch, I mean, people buy lunch and they come in and sit and eat. I'd love to see us do the same thing.
Yeah, we have several libraries in the region actually that'll do um like a lunch and munch uh kind of learning series where people bring brown bag lunches and and they have lecture series as well. But yeah, this, it'd be fine for, I mean, it's open to the public for anybody to attend, so if that's something you wanted to offer group viewing for, I think that would be fine.
Really quick, Liz, when it says noon to one, that's central time.
Not central, mhm, yes. They, everything that they, yes, advertises central time, time zones are the bane of my existence, ancient time zone.
Okay, thank you, Liz, any questions for Liz?
Uh, this may be more for the staff, but under the technology section of this Tennessee standards, I think I'm reading this right, but I'm, I'm, I don't have a, I think the way it printed out might be mistaken. So does it mean if you go down to, there is a yellow section with a no-no, and then below it, under number of specialized workstations for children. In fiscal nineteen twenty, we had eight, and then in fiscal twenty twenty-one, we had zero, is that us, Blount County?
Yes.
But uh, I said that because of COVID.
Yes.
What is our plan, is that number gonna go back for twenty-one?
As soon as we believe that it's safe to start putting out technology that one set of baby hands will touch and then another set of baby hands will touch, and we'll be able to clean them between all those uses. So there are dedicated, there are dedi- dedicated devices that are for the children's area, they're just not out because we don't believe it's yet safe. But uh, what is it, I wanna say that the youth services department, like we have revisited that three times and we're always about to do it, and then there's a new variant. We do revisit it.
But you still have those eight, are those all stations that you have, is that what those are?
No, they were just, uh, what is it, I believe, we tried, uh, we had four tablets that were set up for children's use, and then we had three, uh, three or four computers that were set up for children's use. And right now, I think we have one catalog that is out on the floor for children's use. Uh, well, actually, it's not actually at a child-friendly height, it's higher, so.
But you still have those, they're just not in use in.
They're just not on the floor, that's right.
Let's root it, I think, yes, I just wanna know what's, hopefully they're being used like in the summertime, I want us to make sure those are available, so. Curious on the basis of standard, when we start using things again, you know, who's setting that, talking about it as a board.
I wanna say that, okay, just, just make sure we bring it to your attention.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if we're using standards of when to do stuff or not with COVID, it needs to be clear across the board, and I feel like it should be something the board should be discussing with your, with your, you know, thoughts and opinions and staff's comfort, but I just don't want us to keep not discussing it, it's obviously higher right now.
Please know at the internal side, it is being discussed among staff comfort level. For instance, uh, the, the last email about Omicron coming out, uh, the discussion about the masks, that was very helpful, lovely, thank you. Um, what is it, at each of those, we're deciding, because we don't have uh the, the catalog computers out to the level that we did before, we have scaled back on the public access computers as well. And a lot of that is determined on what we can safely clean before the next person can use it, but uh if you'd like a.
I wanna be able, I wanna be able to answer community member when they say, why isn't, what are the standards of for children, why this isn't out there? Cause I'm getting asked that and saying, I don't know, I'll get back to you.
Is it reasonable to maybe put a bottle of Clorox wipes and let the in, and the users? I don't know the situation or the setup.
Um, well, I mean, and so there, there lies the sticky wicket, it's um, one could say yes, um, however, uh.
You don't wanna leave that decision until the user's that he did or did not clean.
It is on all of our other items.
Well, the children's area, it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we have just, uh, we have not put out the toys, we have not put up, because we used to clean those. And, you know, um, it's not like, oh, we need to clean them once a day, now it's we need to clean it between your use and your use. And that means our staff are cleaning all day long. Um, and not doing other things because they're cleaning to stay vigil- vigilant. So right now, what we do is we just take them off the floor, and I think for the patrons that ask you, you can say, right now, what we're doing is we're looking at uh COVID cases within Blount County and seeing what we can safely put out that would support, and the number one thing is, we could leave it to the individual user, but the more the less control we have on the cleanliness of the areas, the more susceptible our staff is to going down. And once our staff goes down, then library service is truly affected.
I think I just would like a clear answer to give them, standards, is it a certain percentage, you know, what, when are we gonna start bringing some things out, if things get better? I just wanna discuss it next month.
You wanna discuss it next month?
I wanna know, I wanna answer to give to them.
I think the thing that concerns me is like, it's, and I, I, I don't know how best to answer that, because you'll meet some people who will be like, it doesn't matter what your answer is, because they already have, so, um, what what we do is not a, it's fifty percent of this or that. And the only reason I'm having this conversation with you now is because I want to be ready to supply you the information you need next month, and I'm not sure, we might have to talk.
We, we can talk offline, or we can take it offline, I just wanna know is, when, and what I've been asked is, when do things like that come back?
Totally agree with you.
Well, so, so here's the thing, is um, you know, legislation is pushing things along. The local market is pushing things along, um, and the library is moving with it while also listening to the needs of their staff. None of that is a number or a standard anymore, but uh that's currently how we're doing it. Um, I mean, the board can decide, put it all out.
How would you, how would, the world isn't putting anything on a timeline right now, how, how, are you expecting like a, a definite time to be set?
No, we met a few months ago, we said, we asked to bring some of the adult youth services back, and they did. But when folks are asking questions, I, they say, you're a board, they'll email me, you're a board trustee, I'll sometimes send it to Anjanay, sometimes I wait, sit on the, but wait. Someone was cold, so I asked Anjanay. They were asking, when are things gonna be back, so we're all say, whoa, COVID is pretty bad in this area, but I have to be able to give them some kind of answer, I mean, we can't just say.
We can say we re- revisit, revisit it almost monthly.
Yeah.
I wanna, I wanna say now, it's not the fifteenth of every month, but it is the admin planning team meet weekly. And at that stage, at that stage, we talk about um the capacity to bring programming back, what that means uh in terms of balancing that programming with the safety elements that the staff feel they need to operate within this new. Um, so it's constantly being evaluated in one sense, um. But if you'd like, I can, I can start like formally sharing that with the board so that you know. Um, I'm sorry.
I would say you meet on the fifteenth of every month and you evaluate, about that.
Okay.
I just wanna answer.
I think we have to kind of play it by ear, when we look at what the newspaper reports and they say that
Yeah.
two hundred percent of the cases in, in Blount County have COVID.
Definitely.
And like for extensively, they agree.
And we certainly don't wanna put our, our stuff out.
Mariville, um, Mariville Schools today went all digital due to.
Yeah, I completely agree. My questions are not my opinions of COVID or any of that, or reflections, me sending you the email about the mask was painful, okay?
Oh, no, no, that was so helpful.
But it was, it's law, it's legal, and so when this, what, this is, this is the person that says, my kids are in school, duh 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 duh, why can't we come to the library after school and expect some of the same things? When is that coming back? So it's hard to get, not be able to give them an answer.
So here's what I'd like to share with all of you, as soon as you get those, share it.
Yeah.
And what I can immediately do is take it to the next admin planning team, and we can see in what ways we can make adjustments. Um, I mean, we are doing it, um, perhaps we're not doing it enough, or, you know?
You'll never be able to satisfy. I'm just saying, with us, with good answers for folks.
But here's the one thing, is I appreciate everything that you have brought to our attention lately, the temperature, the Title fourteen, no, it's, I don't want.
The temperature is great.
I know.
I, I don't want any of.
But we know we have problems.
I really am.
I don't.
I think that multiple employees complained about it.
And it has been something that we internally have been working with, but we have been like not making the headspace that we need, and so sometimes when a board member says, hey, I've been hearing about that. And so sometimes when a board member says, hey, I've been hearing about that, I took that email, sent it straight to the vendor and was like, okay, we have some explaining to do. And they're making forward movement on it. So it, it is helpful. I don't want, and I, I think I can speak for Manny with this. You guys talking to us and hearing and sharing what you're hearing, please don't feel bad about. We need it. So, thank you.
I just want to give, where are your mouth keys? So give us why you want us to stop there.
I didn't wel- welcome Dawn and I'm sorry, I just noticed that she was up there. Sorry, Dawn. I didn't mean to ignore you. Glad you're doing better and feeling better. She's had COVID.
Too much.
Really? Okay. We have some, some old business, we have their survey and the discussion of the survey. I, I don't want to skip that for today and go on and do it the next time to the brain. And, but what I'd like you to do. I guess my phone is talking to me right here. She just said she didn't have a cell. Uh, it's driving me crazy. For Christmas gifts, I, I got urinase and I hooked up my telephone.
You have a personal relationship with Alexa.
Really? Anyway, what I'd like you to do is look at the survey, see what committees you would actually like to work on. Because each of you will be in either in charge of a committee or on a committee to work at how we're going to address the survey and how you'd like to see it addressed and how Manny and his staff would like to see it addressed. So.
Do we have those committees? Do we, do we have those committees? For us to view?
We can, we got a new one for you.
No.
Wait, the committees?
You don't have the committees?
We don't have a committee yet.
Okay.
Just see which, what areas you'd like to work with.
So look at the survey.
Look at the survey.
And see what elements of it you'd like to dig, dig deeper in.
I don't remember where that is. That's so good. Okay.
It's a very, very busy.
Yeah, I'm still in an ass.
Okay, that's the end of the open. Any new business? Any of our visitors or anyone here with new business? Okay, do we have a motion to?
Before we, before we exit, is this the um, the last board meeting that's gonna, um, they, for you and Janek? And will Manny come in onboard on the twenty next week?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you so, 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 so very much for all the work you've done as interim director. Um, you and the staff have done an amazing job. And I know that it has been crazy, but you know, it's.
Take some day off.
Yes, um, that, we can't thank you enough um for putting up with all of us um and our crazy questions.
You guys have been awesome.
I had time to read.
I appreciate it. Wow, I can choke up physically. I appreciate that. Um, the one thing that I would love to share with you guys. When I came on as interim, this board changed and in a wonderful way. The engagement and the input that I've seen from this board since that interim period, I would like to just say that, you know, Manny is very skilled and talented and yet he will still benefit from the, the level of engagement and your contributions. It has been wonderful. I have not at one stage in this interim felt alone. I knew that I could approach you guys at any time and as a director or someone who's the acting director. That means the world. So thank you. You made it doable.
Thanks very much, guys. We'll see you in the booth.
Motion.
Okay, do we need a motion? Second, third, anybody opposed? Just don't forget it's February. Thanks for coming and bearing with us.
Exactly.
Yeah.